Full of minutes, Monday, April twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-two, Executive Session three thirty P M. Monday, April twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-two, Executive Session four P M. Monday, April twenty-fifth, also two thousand and twenty-two, School Committee Meeting six thirty, and Monday, May second, two thousand and twenty-two, Executive Session five P M. Recommendation to approve the minutes as presented?
I do.
Amy, seconded?
Yep, second.
Any comments? All in favor? All in favor? Okay, public comments. Sarah, do we have anybody? Okay.
We're all good online.
Nobody online, okay. Uh, no communications, and now we move on to committee reports. Construction projects, S H S, S R T C Scheduling Advisory Committee, and Sanford Performing Arts Committee.
Okay, so for construction update, I want to share that I met with our legal counsel and the lead architect from La Valley Brenzinger, Lance Whitehead, and the M D O E Representative Jim Harford. We met last week to discuss next steps and how we can close out the high school and S R T C construction project. Our Facilities and Maintenance Director Dawn Nichols is going to be verifying three roof items that we have on our punch list, and we're doing that to determine if they need to be fixed, if they're covered by warranty. If they need to be fixed and are not covered by warranty, we have to make sure that our cost figures are accurate and realistic, because after that Lance Whitehead will adjust and update our punch list. Uh, we're going to be eliminating a couple, uh, columns on that, and then that punch list will be included in an updated change order that we will sign on our end, and then we are going to issue that to the contractor, Hutter. So those are the next steps, is to be able to update that punch list, change order, get that to Hutter, and then put it in their court to see if we're gonna, um, if they will be agreeing to that, or what the next steps will be. So I will keep everyone updated on that. And then I also just want to announce that, um, our Core Building Committee had tours last week of Sanford Middle School, Sanford Pride Elementary, and Margaret Chase Smith School. Due to COVID pandemic, we were not able to do that, and so we had those tours, uh, last week, and they went very well. Core Building Committee was, uh, very pleased, uh, and very happy. So that is the construction update. Moving on to, um, next, we have the Schedule Advisory Committee. Our next meeting is this Wednesday, May eleventh, at one thirty, down at Sanford High School and Sanford Regional Technical Center. We're going to review the feedback from students and, um, teachers uh, that we, um, reached out to them. If you remember, at our last school committee meeting, I announced that we were getting, uh, student feedback that Monday, April twenty-fifth, and then we were getting teacher feedback that Wednesday, the twenty-seventh, during early release day. So we've had that, uh, feedback, um, to share, as well as a summary of that. That's focused on those three guiding questions. What do we want in a schedule? What do we need in a schedule? And things we can't have in a schedule. So a big thank you to Beth Lambert for, um, collecting and summarizing that data. So that will be the focus of our meeting this Wednesday, um, at, uh, the high school at one thirty. And that's my report on the update for Schedule Advisory Committee.
Okay, uh, Sanford Performing Arts Committee, uh, my report is that we are in the middle of dance recitals. There's a lot of them, and that's a good thing, and they're all enjoying our stage, because, uh, from what I understand, everybody's saying that it's the best around, so that's all good.
And we're also in, um, music, uh, spring concert season. Uh, last week, Steve and I attended the, uh, fifth and sixth grade, uh, middle school concert at the Performing Arts Center, and we had another full house. It was great to see so many kids onstage, uh, participating. And those, uh, concerts will continue, uh, this week. Tomorrow night, we have the high school spring concert, uh, tomorrow night. Uh, we also have some other of our elementary schools, um, we're having their concerts at their individual schools, and then the middle school seventh and eighth concert is, uh, in a couple weeks with that.
Okay, thank you. Superintendent's report. Got student representatives, nobody's here.
I did, uh, John Paul, uh, was not able for student report to attend tonight's meeting, uh, but he did pass along some information that he'd like us to share. Um, the Sanford High School prom is this Saturday at River Mill in Dover, and that'll go from six P M. to ten P M. Our juniors have been completing the N W E As, A P, A P testing has begun. Um, J P. wants us to know that the track team has a home meet this Wednesday at four o'clock. And then, um, there is the This Is Us event next Friday, the, uh, twentieth of, uh, May. And I don't, uh, do we have, um, is Bella or Grace on this evening on Zoom? Okay, so that will be, um, student report for that. And moving on to our Safe Return to School and Continuity of Instruction Plan update. Just a reminder that pool testing will conclude after testing that, uh, takes place this week. And, um, our plan is to send out a message to families, uh, via Facebook, Twitter, and our live feed, uh, like we normally send out information to let them know. That was something I shared at our last meeting that, uh, was coming from the, uh, Governor Mills, um, administration. And right now, we have ordered, um, testing kits, and we expect to get those in a couple weeks, and then we'll be able to send out information for families and staff who want to access those testing kits. I do also want to announce that the S O P, uh, that for responding to positive COVID cases that we've been following, uh, for the Sanford School Department, as well as, uh, all other main schools, that is going to, uh, expire at the end of this school year. And so, uh, we will continue to follow that, but it's going to expire at the end of this school year. Um, and then, um, also wanted to announce that last Friday, as well as today, York County's community, uh, level for COVID, uh, it did go up from the green, which it had been for weeks low. It did move up to yellow this past, uh, Friday and today. And so when it is in yellow, uh, the recommended actions are stay up to date with the COVID vaccines, get tested if you have symptoms, wear a mask if you have symptoms, positive test or exposure to someone with COVID. And if your community, uh, with that. So that's where we are right now. Um, and we will continue to monitor that, um, for us. Just to give an idea of where we are, uh, Beth, uh, thank you for bringing that up. That kind of shows you our attendance percentage, and that goes from April sixth right on through May ninth. And as you can see, uh, at Carl J. Lamb School, we're right in the low, uh, ninety, uh, percent, high eighties. Margaret Chase Smith School, we're up in the nineties, uh, about the, uh, mid nineties for that. At, uh, Sanford High School, same thing, we're in the high eighties for that. And then as we, uh, go down, Sanford Middle School is also in the high eighties. Sanford Pride Elementary is in low nineties, high eighties, and S R T C, uh, is still in the mid nineties. So those have seemed pretty true and held with that as we've gone, um, through, um, the last, uh, month or so, as we've been, uh, guiding this. Uh, since our last school committee meeting in April twenty-fifth, uh, for positive cases, um, on the twenty-sixth, we had nine, on the twenty-seventh, one, twenty-eighth of April, three, on the twenty-ninth, five. And then last week, um, Mondays are always big days. We had nineteen on May second, and then Tuesday, uh, the third, we had six, uh, Wednesday, nine, uh, Thursday, eight, uh, Friday, two. And then today, uh, we did have fourteen. So the active cases in the last fourteen days, S R T C thirteen, the high school twelve, middle school twelve, Carl J. Lamb twenty-four, Sanford Pride six, and M C S also six. So, uh, holding steady, I do, uh, one thing that has caught us is those, uh, Carl J. Lamb numbers, and we do have a situation there where that's impacted our staff, um, on a, uh, a high amount in terms of where that is. So it's, uh, COVID's still very much with us, but at the same time, uh, we are, um, doing our best to be able to, uh, manage that and be able to keep our kids in school doing that. So that's the update. Any questions?
Sanford news.
Okay, so we'll go, moving right now to school news, um, coming up. First off, we'll talk about the high school, and, um, they had the Elks banquet, um, last week. That's the fiftieth annual Elks Youth Banquet, and that's where, um, the high school's top ten are announced. And then you can see their, uh, pictures. And then also, they also announced, uh, S R T C Students of the Year. They are Riley Hamm and Curtis Voder. Uh, they also had their Teens of the Year, uh, Lila Adewatikar and Joshua Werner. And Student of the Year, our own school committee rep, Bella Farrington. So congratulations to those students. Also, last Friday at the high school, uh, they had Decision Day, where they were looking at our seniors announcing what their plans are after graduation. That could be if they're heading into the workforce, it could be if they're heading into the, um, forces or the military, or heading off to college. Usually, uh, May first is one of those big days, so that's where you can see Decision Day there. Moving over to S R T C, I mentioned this a little bit at our last school committee meeting, uh, but on April fourteenth, um, Sanford Regional Technical Center held their Celebrating Partnerships. And what they do there is, uh, they celebrate those people who are part of the Individual Program Advisory Committee, and they also welcome new partners. So we had over a hundred people attend that. Our Culinary Arts, uh, passed out hors d'oeuvres for that, and then we had some of our students from the Welding Program talk about their internship programs at Casco Bay Steel and Rub Buildings, uh, Systems. And so there's, uh, a picture of Ariana, Carl, and Michael. They did an outstanding, uh, part of that. And then the second part was they broke out into their own program advisory committees. They met new partners, kept tours of the building, and then had further discussions about opportunities to connect S R T C with projects and student employment. So a big thank you to Career Exploration Coordinator Kaye Schindler, uh, for that. That was, event was sponsored through a grant from the Melmac Education Foundation, um, with that. Moving over to the middle school, uh, the J M G program visited Southern Maine Community College. And so there, uh, from Mrs. Hool's, uh, class, uh, is a picture of them. They got a college tour, and they learned about programs available, uh, at higher education. Uh, also, uh, they celebrated Earth Day. There's Chloe and Savannah celebrating Earth Day every day at Sanford Middle School. And then, uh, Carl J. Lamb School, um, the Red Room Kindergarteners, they're playing a subtraction game called Disappearing Train with that. That sounds like fun, uh, at C J L. Moving over to M C S, uh, they had their Health and Wellness Day right before the April break. And so you could see everything there, the various social and emotional sessions that were geared towards students, on all the different workshops they had from, um, the Blender Bike, the Art of Comic Making, Magic Show, um, and on bike safety and a lot more. So a big thank you to the P T A and the workshop volunteers and presenters for that. And then their Classroom in Action is Mrs. Cody's class, uh, celebrated Growing Vowel Power with the Glow Day Party. Boy, that sounds like fun. Glow Day Party there, uh, for Classroom in Action. They also had Aces Day, all children exercising simultaneously. And so all of our schools, um, elementary schools did something with Aces Day, and they were able to get outside that day and walk around the perimeter of the building. And then Sanford Pride, uh, I also mentioned this, um, I teased this at our last, uh, school committee meeting. They had a cultural celebration, um, so they could get a greater awareness of different cultures in our school, community, and nation. So this is something they've been working on since the end of February, and they were linked to the curriculum. And so as you look at that kindergarten, grade one, they focused on Maine history. And then you also had other grade one classrooms learning about Spanish and A S L alphabets. And then next, you have grade one, they teamed with the physical education teacher to learn about Cambodian culture and Community Day. And then they also studied Guatemala tradition and telling your worries to your worry doll. I think I need to get myself a worry doll. And then grade two, uh, they studied Maine tribes, specifically the Wabanaki tribe. And then also, grade two, they studied Thailand. Uh, what was neat there, one of the students in that class, uh, has parents that were originally from Thailand. And then also, one of, uh, the staff members there at, uh, Pride also lived in Thailand. So they're able to share their experiences. I know when I went into their room, they were speaking to me in Thailand. I, I learned some new welcoming, uh, pieces there. Grade three, uh, could choose any country to research and create presentations to, uh, to, uh, display. And then grade four, they were working on, uh, cultural groups currently living in Maine. And so, um, you also had researching things that fit into the five senses, and then focusing on STEM activities. So, um, yeah, you can be able to look at a lot of the different things that went on there, uh, very schoolwide. So you had everybody, and what I also liked about that was you would have presentations going to the younger kids. So some of the younger grades would go to the older grades to be able to have those presentations for them. So, uh, nice, great event. I know that was a lot of work, uh, for Sanford Pride. And then, uh, last one would be, uh, Community Adult Education. There's another student to celebrate passing the last of their five official high set exams. So that makes it thirteen students completing that, and now have their high school credentials with that. And S C A E is nearing their, end of their spring term. They are going to have a gap term. Uh, that will be from May twenty-third to June thirtieth, uh, as they wait their summer program, um, for that. And they are also looking forward to the S C A E graduation. That'll take place on June first, um, in the SPAC, in the Performing Arts Center at seven P M. With that, and that is the good news, uh, school news report.
Thank you. Okay, we're moving on to directors' reports. Beth, are you going first, or are we?
Okay.
J M G presentation, Full Plates and Full Potential?
Yeah, one of the things that, um, I know, um, Full Plates, Full Potential, uh, reached out to our partnership for, uh, our Jaws for Maine graduate programs at both Sanford Middle School and Sanford High School. So to give you an update on that tonight, we have, um, uh, students and staff from both J M G programs at the middle school and also at the high school. And, uh, so I'll hand it off to them to take it away and walk us through that presentation.
Yep, I believe Cheryl, you have, um, sharing abilities, so you can share your screen for everyone.
Great, thank you so much. Yes, thank you so much for having us. I'm Cheryl Gifford. I am the J M G specialist at the high school. And I am here with two of my students, and we're going to kick off this presentation. I'm going to share it, and then, um, Tara will, um, introduce her students at the middle school. Hold on one second. Okay. You guys see that okay? Want to move that? Okay, go ahead. You guys can, you guys can click along. Go ahead.
Hi, I'm Emily Letourneau. I'm a freshman at Sanford High School, and this is my first year in J M G.
Hi, I'm Haley Bolduc. I'm a senior here at Sanford High School. This is my sixth year of J M G, and we will be presenting the Full Plates, Full Potential presentation.
Oh, there you go. Let me move this over down the bottom. Is it because of? Okay, there you go. You can just move it.
Okay. J M G students researched, uh, food insecurity. We learned about benefits like snap and wick. We learned about and practiced empathy. Students toured the cafeteria and met the staff. For one week, students tried school breakfast every day, filled out a survey, and/or voiced their opinions. The next week, students ate school lunch, filled out a survey, and voiced their opinions again.
Uh, for breakfast, the student surveys, the surveys showed that students liked the yogurt parfaits, cinnamon buns, cereal, and banana bread the best. They're unclear about the food rules, such as why they have to take a fruit. They wish they could eat in the classroom, because most of them are not hungry for a few hours after they get up. But they don't understand this is due to COVID safety protocols. The mindset is that all school food is not good.
Survey says for lunch, students like pizza, mozzarella sticks, and cheesy bread the best. They wish there were more salad options. They wish they had a quiet space to eat. There are rules they don't understand.
Uh, J M G students will use the grant fund sponsored by J M G and Full Plates, Full Potential to purchase ingredients to make one thousand yogurt parfaits. J M G students will offer each student a yogurt parfait during lunch in hopes that they will then want to try the food in the cafeteria. Understanding the rules. Students will receive a handout to educate them about the rules set by the U S D A, such as having a fruit or vegetable with a meal.
Uh, some barriers and overcoming them. Some students may be lactose intolerant or have other dietary restrictions. Overcoming them. Let students know, we got you. The school will make food for students with dietary needs, but the doctors know. Uh, more barriers. Some students will be absent the day free parfaits are handed out. Overcoming them. We will offer these students another opportunity to get one. This day will be promoted on the TV screens around the school, as well as on school daily announcements that are emailed.
Barriers. Mindset about school meals. Some students won't want to try it. Either, uh, overcoming them. Tell them, we didn't want to try it either, now we go every day. Have students educate students through conversations and a handout. Um, the lunchroom can seem overwhelming with all the students and can be loud. Educate students. Show them this P S A about a more quiet room to eat breakfast or lunch.
Action. Are you sick of all this chaotic, and all the laughing?
Why don't we try out the water pump, where you can eat peas and talk to your friends?
Or you can come enjoy a meal by yourself under the stairs. So romantic.
Come enjoy a nice free lunch at the Sanford High School for free in the cafeteria.
We promise you, the lunch pakers are really nice. They don't bite.
The goal for breakfast, increase breakfast numbers. Currently, a hundred to two hundred students eat breakfast each day out of one thousand, one hundred enrolled students.
Uh, the goal for lunch, we want to increase the lunch numbers. Currently, five hundred to six hundred students eat lunch every day out of one thousand, one hundred enrolled students.
S H S students decided to hand out free yogurt parfaits during lunch to promote free breakfast. Full Plates, Full Potential provided us with a grant to purchase the same ingredients that the school uses to make the yogurt parfaits. Head of School Nutrition, Holly Hartley, purchased these ingredients, and Linda Stone, head of Sanford High School Cafeteria, helped us set up and provided us with everything we needed, including a lot of support. Some photos of our process.
To educate the students, we printed labels and placed them on the cups. We handed out six hundred free five-ounce parfaits to every student who wanted one. At the end of the school wa, at the end of the school day, we made an announcement to thank students for trying the parfaits and reminded them that they are free for breakfast every day. The breakfast numbers, uh, range from one hundred to two hundred a day. The next day, breakfast numbers were a record high of three hundred and thirty-seven. Remaining ingredients were donated to the school and kitchen staff used, and the kitchen staff used it to make extra parfaits the next week due to the high demand.
And numbers continue to rise. We feel that what you have done has increased our breakfast participation. We have been constantly, wait, consistently well over three hundred every day, except for two days, with our highest record now being three sixty. We also have incorporated our parfaits and smoothies into our super snack program, which has increased those numbers as well. Thank you so much for all your hard work, Linda Stone.
To continue to increase school breakfast and lunch numbers, J M G students recommend more free samples throughout the year. This was a success, but the numbers are still going up, and a great way to highlight all that the cafeteria has to offer.
Thank you, Full Plates, Full Potential, for this opportunity and grant to help promote school meals and for your support. Thank you, Sanford School Administration, for letting us participate in this, uh, pilot program and for your support. Thank you, J M G, for choosing S H S and S M S in this pilot program and your support. Thank you, Holly Hartley, Linda Stone, and S H S cafeteria staff for helping us throughout this project and your support. Thank you, students, for participating in our study and using our, your voice to help us with your study, our study.
And now I'd like to turn things over to the Sanford Middle School.
Hello, hello. So I, at this time, I'm proud to introduce two of my students, Ella Motalo, Motolo, I still said it wrong, Ella, even though I checked, and Izzy Mitchell.
What has S M S been up to? What has S M S been up to? We began our Full Plates, Full Potential project by researching what food, what is food insecurity, having identified barriers to accessing food or families in Sanford, having researched how eating unhealthy foods affects students' health and behavior, having learned about culture and religious differences and how they affect access to food, and having learned about equitable means.
We had the opportunity to talk with Angie, our cafeteria manager, and we learned that the behind-the-scenes of lunch and breakfast are a lot more complicated than we thought. Seventy-five percent of students currently get hot lunch, and that number is the highest in the district. Only fifteen percent of students were getting breakfast at the time of our meeting with Angie. That number was very low compared to the past years and other schools. Breakfast is currently served until ten A M., which we didn't know. We thought it ended at seven forty A M. Um, you can purchase an extra lunch or breakfast if you're still hungry and want seconds. If there's a lunch option you don't see on the buffet, you can ask the staff for it, which we didn't know we could do.
We then looked among ourselves to identify the barriers within our specific school that we're, that we're keeping students from eating breakfast or lunch. Through an activity in class and talking to our friends, we started to find out for breakfast, found out that for breakfast, there isn't enough space for all students to fit in the caf, so they choose to not eat instead. There isn't enough time to eat breakfast before homeroom for students who arrive at school at seven thirty A M. or later. Students feel rushed to eat in the morning. Students are not able, are not always able to eat in homeroom because of COVID protocols. It depends on the teacher, so that means students have, have the equitable access to eating breakfast during homeroom. Students and staff didn't know that breakfast was served until ten A M. They thought it ended at seven forty A M. There are students with dietary restrictions that haven't notified the nurse, so they weren't being offered the alternative meal options.
For lunch, students who aren't comfortable eating lunch in front of others often choose not to eat lunch, even if they are hungry. Um, students who sometimes don't see what they want to eat for lunch on the buffet, so they decide to not eat instead of asking the staff if they have more. Students missed the snack shack that offered more options, but we realized it isn't equitable, because the snack shack wouldn't be free to everyone.
We put together a school survey to see if the barriers we identified in class were correct, and if there were any barriers to getting breakfast or lunch that we were missing. Over sixty percent of the school filled out our survey. We also used the survey as an edu, educational tool. Within the questions, we let students know that breakfast is open until ten A M., that they can purchase an additional breakfast, breakfast and lunches, if they want to, and so on. Teachers gave us positive feedback, saying it really helped, and these were things both students and teachers didn't know. Within days after the survey went out, there was an increase of almost a hundred students every day getting breakfast. Just because teachers now knew they could bring their classes or let students go if they were hungry and didn't have a ch- let students go if they were hungry and didn't have a chance to get breakfast before homeroom.
Eight percent of students didn't eat lunch most days. The main reasons were they don't like to eat in front of others, they wish there was a snack shack with more options to eat. Many students, over 400, arrived here at school too late to eat breakfast before homeroom and did not have enough time to go into the cafe and get breakfast. We were correct that students and staff didn't know they can go for seconds. Breakfast is served until 10:00 AM. And if they don't see the meal option they wanted, they can ask.
To address these issues, we thought of the following ideas and presented them to our principal, Ms. Leiden. Having two grab and go breakfast carts in the morning to allow students to arrive after 7:30 AM to be able to grab a breakfast and bring it up, bring it with them to eat. Bringing the lunch snack shack back to offer more options during lunch. Working with guidance, working with guidance to offer alternative places to eat for those who identified this as a reason they don't eat lunch. Using posters and school announcements to let students and staff know about breakfast being open later. The option to purchase seconds about the food closet JMG created and the bags of food students can take home on Fridays for the weekend and the importance of healthy eating at a young age.
Breakfast numbers have already increased since staff and students found out they have longer time to get breakfast than they thought. More students are eating breakfast before homeroom because they have the opportunity to try breakfast with classmates when teachers brought them to get breakfast when they realized the food is good. Ms. Leiden said that JMG could run a snack shack ourselves and we are working on getting that going. Ms. Leiden and Angie okayed us the Full Placeful Potential funds on two grab and go breakfast carts, which will allow many more students to access breakfast in the morning. The survey didn't allow us to collect, the survey allowed us to collect the names of students that have not been eating lunch most days. We were able to provide the list of guidance and they've been able to check in and offer support to these students, like alternative menu options or quieter places to eat lunch.
Some of our posters. The breakfast carts have arrived. We received $4,600 to purchase two amazing breakfast carts for our Sanford Middle School. These breakfast carts will make it much easier for students who arrive after 7:30 AM to access breakfast. A group of students will be working with our kitchen manager on using the remaining funds to purchase bins, sides, or anything else needed for the carts. Thank you.
Wow. Does anybody have anything they'd like to say? Yeah, go ahead. Let's start with you, John.
I started taking notes and then I realized I could just sum it up that said, you know, projects like that give me hope. It was, it's wonderful education for all students and all students have the benefit of improving their eating habits. It was, that was really, really great.
Go ahead, John.
Yeah, I was just kind of amazed at the, the high school on changing those numbers that how many more students, once they tried the parfaits, ended up going, going the next day and started having them. That was, again, I'll echo what Jonathan said, that is just great stuff, really good. Thank you, guys.
Matt?
Have you ever had those parfaits? They're good. I'd go back for those, too.
Amy?
I just want to say congratulations for all of you guys to present to us. I know it can be intimidating and you all did an amazing job and all the efforts you did to put all your projects together. Great job and you benefited or you're having a lot of students benefit from your hard work, so thank you so much. Great job.
Yeah, I want to echo what everybody said. I think it must have been an amazing project to be a part of. I'm sure you learned a lot and I love the problem solving, too. And you helped the students, you helped the school communities. I mean, thank you so much and your presentation was excellent.
And I just want to add right along that is a great job, you know, you talk about identifying the barriers, but you didn't stop there. You just went and also tried to problem solve and look at some solutions to be able to come back and working with the various stakeholders to do that. So I think, I think that was awesome. I do want to announce that just like this year where school lunch and school breakfast is free for all students, that is also been approved for next year as well. So that's going to be something that, no cost to students when it comes back to breakfast and lunch with that.
Yeah, thank you. You all should be very, very proud of yourselves. I hope that you are. I hope that you are and we'd love to see more. Let us know what, what next project you do. We appreciate you very much.
Thank you so much for the opportunity and that's great news to hear about free lunch for next year as well and breakfast, so thank you for that.
Thank you. Okay, Steve Bousier.
Good evening. I'm on. Couple updates tonight. The first one is talk a little bit about staff wellness. During our Wednesday ERD last week, the district held what has become our annual wellness day for staff during the early release day. During the first hour, Cheryl Fornier met with school staff to discuss open enrollment for insurance and to discuss updates whether it's school insurance employee plans. During the second hour, building wellness teams planned wellness activities for staff to participate in. Activities offered included pickleball, volleyball, walking, make your own trail mix, and yoga, just to name a few. It was a great opportunity for staff to engage in activities that support their own personal wellness and to build relationships with their colleagues as we head into the home stretch here. Thank you to the buildings wellness teams for all of their work in making the afternoon a success. Update on pre-K, registration for pre-K in the fall continues. Registrations, applications are due this Friday, May 13th for families that were selected through the lottery. We've had a number of youngsters come into the central office to register, so it's exciting to see those applications come in. We did receive some concerns around the schedule for pre-K. The original schedule was eight to two and there's some concerns around that last hour in terms of childcare. Pre-K advisory team met last week and we discussed the concern. One of the challenges we did discuss was providing preparation time for teachers. That was part of the reason why we had that early dismissal and we looked at some potential solutions around that to solve that problem. In addition, transportation was one of the questions that came up and I have a meeting with Ledgmere this week to get an update on transportation and also to discuss pre-K. So in the next week or so, we will come and make a decision in regards to expanding, if we're able to expand, based on those two barriers that I talked about earlier. Once we make that decision, we will notify all of the families that have been accepted into the lottery, just to let them know that that switch has been made to communicate with them. And then we will open up the registration to families that are on that current waitlist that we have. We do have a waitlist. I would say there are about eight or nine names on it, so it's exciting that we're moving forward with that. Summer programming. So prior to April break, the end of March, beginning of April, I did have an opportunity to meet with all of the players in regards to summer facility use. That involves Don Nichols, Jason Dudley, our maintenance and facility folks, our summer school folks for Title I, special education, as well as Lori from the rec department and the YMCA. And so in terms of summer facility use this summer, we will be having activities at Sanford High School, Sanford Middle School, CGL, and Pride. If you remember, MCS will not be used because it is not an approved site for summer food service programming, so MCS will not be used. Just to note, the middle school also is not an approved site for summer food service programming based on our free and reduced lunch numbers, but we are allowed to have programming there because the students will be able to walk over to Memorial Gym to receive breakfast and lunch. So that's why we're having program there. Speaking of summer meals, we are offering summer meals once again this summer to individuals 18 years or younger. We will be offering meals at Sanford High School, Sanford Pride Elementary, Carpentier Park, Curtis Lake Church, Springvale Playground, and the YMCA. So that's a great thing for our community. Getting into actual summer programming, we will continue with Title I programming, which is our summer reading and math intervention for Title I students who have been identified in K through five. And we're fortunate to have Ellie Merrick, who has ran that program in the past, who will be spearheading that again this summer. So we're fortunate to have Ellie. This is Ellie's last hurrah. She will be finishing in July with us. Jump Start, and that will be at CGL. Jump Start, no, I corrected myself, that's at Pride Elementary School. Jump Start for incoming kindergarten students identified during the screening process will be held at Pride Elementary School and Angie Labby, who has some experience with Jump Start programming, will be running that program. The Extended School Year, ESY, which is our summer special education programming for students identified through their IEPs, will be occurring at Carl Lamb School this summer as it has in the past and Jed Russell will be leading that program. Now, in regards to some of the summer programming that we are doing as a result of the ESSR funds that we have, we are looking once again to work with YMCA to offer a educational support person like we did last summer through an MOU with the YMCA and we are looking to have that same arrangement again. The rec department will be offering programming to students once again in our community at the middle school, Pride, Memorial Gym, and CGL. We are working with the rec department, a lot of folks to work with the rec department to provide scholarships to eligible students to make sure that we have students that want to participate or are able to participate. And then we're also looking to do some educational programming with the rec and at this time I'm going to turn it over to my compadre Beth. Did you have any questions or anything so far? Okay, I'll turn it over to you, Beth.
Thank you, Steve.
Hello, everyone. So several weeks ago, a few weeks ago, we posted for some educational directors like we did last year and these teachers worked in collaboration with the Sanford Rec Programs to offer some fun, engaging educational kind of component to the camps. And I remember last year, at first the kids were like, what do you mean? What do you mean we have to learn something? And then when they really got into it, they were like, okay, this is kind of cool. All right, I like this. So it was kind of funny. So we're looking to bring that back again this year. I've already solidified the middle school and high school band camp will be happening again the week of June 13th, the first week after school finishes. The middle school drama camp will also be, they will also be having a camp again this year, I believe it's the middle of July. I just finalized that and I can't remember the date, I'm sorry. SRTC is also offering their summer exploratory week again for middle school students and that's later at the end of June. Let me see, Mr. Peterman is also working on credit recovery offerings, courses for students at the high school this summer. And so on top of those programs, we're also looking to send home books with students again this summer like we did last year for this year, it's pre-K through grade 12. Students will receive in the upper grades a single book each and then the elementary anywhere is from two to three books. We worked in partnership with the Reading is Fundamental grant, so that allowed us to offer a few more books to some of our younger students. And the purpose of this is just to help build home libraries and encourage kids to read over the summer. They'll get, the elementary will get a fiction as well as a nonfiction book of their choice and they seemed to really enjoy that last year. So we're looking forward to doing that again. Our librarians, the poor things, I've been having them order books and books and books and books, so they've been having a good time, but it has taken them quite a while to make sure they picked the really, the good, the right ones, the right fits for our students. I will create a summer brochure again like I did last year. I'll make sure to include not only the offerings that we have as the district, but links and activities that the community libraries, Springville and Goodall are offering, as well as activities families can do together, either inside, outside with technology, without technology, a lot of the similar things that we did last year. And I'll be working on that and we'll have that ready to go by the end of school for everybody, so. Any questions for me?
Any questions or comments? No? Amy?
Thank you.
Thank you, Beth. That's a lot of work.
Yeah.
A lot of work, thank you. It sounds amazing. Okay, new business, have food service contract?
I think it's financials first, right?
Oh.
No.
Oh, did they change that?
Yeah.
Okay, I have the old one. Okay, so food service first?
Sure, so as you get ready Cheryl, sorry to put you on the spot with that. We had an executive session earlier before tonight's meeting where we could really dive into this tentative contract proposal for the food service. That's one that will start July 1st, 2022. It's a three-year contract going up through July 30th, 2025. Looks like we have a typo there with that, so we'd like to be able to, oh, wait a minute, I'm sorry, no, 2022, 2025. I was reading Acton, I was like, what's going on there? My apologies. Food service contract is three years, 2022 to 2025. I'm happy because very good negotiations working with our food service people and really what this contract does is always, we really do our best to make sure that we are looking around to our competitors in our area to be able to make sure what we're offering is very comparable and very competitive. And so I'm pleased that this one does that and we asked this evening that you approve the food service contract from July 1st, 2022 to June 30th, 2025 as presented.
Yeah, I just want to shout out to the food service union reps. They, they're just a great group of women to work with. As a community member, I think we should be really proud of the group of people. They work really hard each day and you see a lot of the things that we just saw with the JMG, you know, all dealing with food and I just want to say thank you to them and I appreciate them.
Anybody else? Yeah, absolutely. I think we all echo the same sentiment. Thank you, thank you. All in favor? All in favor? Okay, next one, contract to provide education services. Recommendation?
The Acton?
Yep.
Yes. So the Acton for, is the first one, the educational services? Yeah, I obviously have an old copy of.
Nutrition director.
Oh, nutrition, okay. So nutrition, there's actually no changes to the contract. They, it's just starting out with the rate we currently have, so it's the continue as is.
So I'll jump in here. One thing that came up is the Acton contract was up and that's usually been like a 10-year agreement and so Acton had reached out to us. If you remember, we did put a school committee workshop together where the school committee for Sanford and the school committee of Acton, we met at Acton to review that and what we found was both parties were very happy with the current arrangement in terms of how things were really working. So from that, we put together a subcommittee that would go back and kind of work on looking at where the contracts and extending those. And so we've broken those down into three areas. The first one is with nutrition, the second one is education services, and the third one is special education administrative services. So what we're going to do tonight is we'll take those as separate in looking at that and as Cheryl mentioned, really you're not seeing, with things working well, you're not seeing a lot of different changes with that for it. So the first one up is the nutrition director service and that will be from July 1st of 2022 and that will go through June 30th, 2021, 2031.
Motion to approve?
Seconded. Any discussion? All in favor? All in favor?
Cheryl, you want to take the second one for educational services?
So educational services, there's actually no changes to the contract. This one is actually not starting until, oh no, this one is. So it starts July 1st, 2023. This one starts in a year. We decided to do all three at the same time instead of holding this one off to the other one because it does kind of coincide with the special education one, so we wanted to do them at the same time. It's still a 10-year contract, but we're going to, we're renewing it at this time. So the rates are staying the same. Everything's staying the same on this one. This one was, everyone's been happy with this one.
Okay, motion to approve the contract?
Seconded.
Seconded. Any discussion? All in favor? All in favor?
So the third one is the special education contract for Acton. We did make one minor change to this contract, mostly just to, we added a line to say that should a student's needs require more administrative oversight beyond what is customary, Sanford and Acton will discuss additional costs. That's the only change to this contract. It was just to cover us in case we have. It was just to cover us in case we have a family or a student that takes a lot of time.
Okay, motion to approve? Seconded. Any discussion?
Just wanted to add, we have a great relationship with Acton, and the Acton school board has already signed this, so they're, they're in favor, it's just, it's a nice working relationship.
Okay. All in favor? All in favor.
Next up, Cheryl, is the RFQ for Willard Interior Painting Project One, first floor and the stairwells.
Yeah, so I handed out, the bids were due today, so we were trying to get this one turned around quickly so that we could get the painting done sooner than later, where we're going to try to get Willard going. So the, the first one is for the RFQ for the first floor stairwells for $83,200. We only got one bid in for both of these bids, and it's our normal guy that, the business that's been doing a lot of our painting throughout the construction projects. So I, you want me to go over the second one at the same time?
Sure.
Then you can vote. The second project is the basement. We did both of them at the same time, but did them as two different projects, because one, we wanted a different due date than the other. So the due date on the first project is June 1st, and the due date on the second project is June 15th. This would allow us to have, us to be able to move down through the building as cleaning happens after we paint, and allows us to get other projects done. So that was $72,000 for the basement portion of the building at Willard.
Okay.
And are those within budget in terms of what we're looking at for those figures?
Yeah, we were expecting it to be closer to one, a little closer to 145, it's slightly over, but we have some extra painting money there, so we're all set.
Okay, recommendation to approve, project one, project two, for Willard Interior Painting, first floor stairwell and basement.
Seconded.
Seconded. Any discussion? All right, all in favor? All in favor. Financials.
Financial, financial. So financials. So these are the March financials, because they got tabled last time. Last week, or last month, I actually started the new dashboard, so as you can see, we have that now as page one of our financials. And as you can see, we are just slightly above budget, but remember, we're running up, the budget number we run is based on COVID years, because we're taking what percentage we used in the past year to figure out what percentage of the budget we should have spent as of now. So I'm not worried about it, it just, we're spending at a different rate than we did in prior year because of COVID. So if you look down through, everything seems to be running really well. Our expenses are just slightly above what the budget says when you run it against a COVID year, so we're doing really well. Revenues are running above budget, mostly because we get an additional subsidy this year, and so it's all running really well. Federal grants, we're doing really well at collecting money on that, still running a little behind on, on the ESER funds, as you can see in the orange graph. They're just timing, we're, we're waiting for that. I submit an invoice and I wait. So, but we did just find out that we're allowed to do a three-month billing, so I am in the process of doing a three-month billing instead of doing a one-month billing, so hopefully we'll be able to get caught up. So they're kind of releasing that. They told us we couldn't do that up until now. I think a lot of people are behind on that one. The enterprise funds are running right at budget, so, or the revenue is just right there with the expenses, so we're looking good on that. And the other major grants, we're running revenues against expenses really well, too, since we hired the new grants person. She is literally billing the week after the month ends. She has all of them billed already, so that's awesome. And so I added some new ones, because Jonathan asked for some more graphs, or different reporting. So I've done, run it similar to how we run that first page. So I did it by article, and yeah, we can see also that you're going to have some budgets that are going to look like we're over budget, but it's because of spend rate timing, but we're really within budget, because we're looking at us against COVID year. So that's made it a little difficult to look at us, budget to actual, because we budget for a full year, we don't budget by month. So you can look at Article One, it looks like our expenses are below budget. Article Two, we are below budget. Article Three, slightly above budget, but they've been buying a lot of supplies earlier because we, compared to last year because of COVID, so I'm okay with that. They're within their budget, though. Article Four, we're running behind on budget, which is other instruction, which is good, and that's, I think some of that's to do with COVID, too. Article Five, it looks like we're running slightly below budget, which is your staff and student support, and staff administration, it looks like it's running a little over, but that's mostly just to the timing of, of a few things that we've bought. Article Seven, same thing, I mean, it's like $12,000 difference, so it's, it makes it look like we're way above budget, but we're really not. Transportation, we're below budget. And then Article Nine, makes it look like we're way above budget, but we've actually been doing all of our capital, proposed capital, we've already got almost all of that done. So that actually makes it look like we're above budget, so I would say it's all about timing. We're keeping a close eye on their budget. We've had some maintenance costs to get caught up on things we haven't done for a couple of years, and it's, we've been spending a little bit of money there, but we're keeping a close eye on it. Debt, it makes it look like we're over budget, but it's just the timing on that one also. We made a payment in, in the month before we did in the prior year during COVID, because we didn't get bills as quickly. And then the other, which is just PAC. I can read through the whole memo if you want, but you guys, you're good?
No, we're good, thank you.
You're good? But I, I think we're in good shape. It's, the biggest thing is that we're spending at our normal rates and not at COVID rates, so, you know, if you look at us compared to a couple of years ago, our rate spends are probably really similar to that. So that's been some of the differences this year compared to last year.
Thanks, Cheryl. For, for folks that are watching, I mean, it is easy just to see a graph, are we on budget? I mean, you, you have to be on budget, if not, there'll be another executive session to figure out how we're going to figure that out, so, but it's nice just to see a color-coded snapshot and move on, not to make you work three more hours each night, so, thank you for that.
Yeah, I'm trying to, you know, try to make it easy to understand so that someone can look at it and understand where we're at. I'm hoping next year we'll make it look a little better when we actually go against a normal run rate year.
Okay, awesome. Thank you so much, Cheryl. Motion to approve the March 2022 financials as presented?
Yep.
John, seconded by Amy. No discussion?
No.
All in favor? All in favor.
I think that was my last item.
Thank you. Moving on, there's no old business, so next we move to resignations and retirements.
Sure, so as we get ready to talk about all of our staffing, this is a big part of our meeting, because this is the first school committee meeting in May, and we have the deadline for us to nominate all of our probationary teachers, staff from this year for a second-year probationary contract is May 14th, and also to nominate those going from a second-year probationary contract onto continuing contract. So those who have looked over the agenda can see quite a few, so we'll do our best to try to work our way through this. We do have some resignations to announce. Brittany Brotto-Messo from special ed teacher at MCS. Kayla Goodwin, fourth-grade teacher, MCS. Melissa Melnack, sixth-grade ELA teacher, special ed teacher at Sanford Middle School. Melissa Young, special education SEAL team, grades five through eight. And Brianna Steider, self-contained teacher at Carl J. Lamb. Number of appointments there, I won't name all of them, but those are really for our Title I summer school and Jump Start. You heard Steve talk about what our plans are. We do have a number, and what I'm proud of that is a lot, all of those people are our current employees, so that's something that they are going to be working over to do that with the Title I and with our Jump Start programs to be able to do that. There is one athletic nomination for next fall, seventh-grade boy soccer coach nominating Keith Gendron, announcing Keith Gendron for that one. We don't have any transfers. As I mentioned, the staff nominations, these are nominations, so this is something the school committee will have to vote on. These are the people nominating for our professional staff for a second year. I want to give a big thank you to our administrators on our administrative team in terms of working with these first-year staff people. Also want to thank their mentors as they went through the process, and so I'm proud to announce them for a second year. The, those that will be at Carl J. Lamb, Bridget Adams Kindergarten, Chloe Camery, second grade, Ashley Clark, fourth grade, Kelly Gontier, fourth grade, Lindsay Herzig, second grade, Andy Kay, third and fourth resource room teacher, Sam Giese, special education social worker, Corinne Lechance, third-grade teacher, Katrina Leadberg, first-grade teacher, Gabrielle Leskey, second-grade teacher, and Devin Talbot, social worker at Carl J. Lamb. And then those that will be in ESER positions are Andy Kay, Corinne Lechance, and Gabby Leskey, and Devin Talbot. Moving over from district positions, we have as a behavior intervention teacher, David Ekram, ESL teacher, Nisha McGuckin, and then our school nurse from a district, helping us, District Y will be Melissa Phillips, and all of those are ESER positions. Moving over to MCS, Margaret Chase Smith School, we have Holly Brown, second-grade teacher, ESER position, Paige Collop, second grade, Bethany Combs, resource room, Maria Cody, kindergarten, Brittany McClure, school, a school counselor, Deanna Morrow, kindergarten teacher, that is an ESER position, Jen Murphy, third-grade teacher, Christina Smith, health teacher, Lindsey Tibbetts, PE and health teacher, and Sally Tinkum, fourth-grade teacher. And Delani Townsend, social worker at MCS, and Delani's position is with ESER funds. Moving down to Sanford High School, Philippa Adams, art teacher, ESER funds, Anna Alacoco, Spanish teacher, ESER funds, Connor Beadleman, math teacher, ESER funds, Renee Dubois-Breschenon, guidance, school counselor, Marie Bushnell, science teacher, Kaylee Colbath, math teacher, Janie Deschambault, English teacher, Haley Frankcore, band music teacher, John Hamilton, resource room teacher, grades nine through 12, Jeffrey Cooper, science teacher at the high school, ESER funds, Anna Lane, English teacher, ESER funds, Alyssa McLean, social studies teacher, ESER funds, Katie Schindler, career exploration, career exploration coordinator, Lauren Levike Roy, English teacher, Cecilia Sarani, outreach, social worker, that will be with ESER funds, and Heather Weaver, English teacher, also with ESER funds, Karina Woodward, science teacher at the high school. These positions are all at Sanford Middle School, Angela Avery, school counselor, ESER funds, Megan Colapi, resource teacher, ESER funds, Mark Booker, grade eight, Reed 180 teacher, ESER funds, Sarah Crabtree, eighth-grade teacher, ESER funds, Nicola Donatelli, self-contained teacher, Catherine Echavari, seventh-grade teacher with ESER funds, Caitlin Gray, school nurse, Felicia Kern, sixth-grade math, Chambrie Kumka, teacher, gifted, talented, Chris Kumka, fifth-grade teacher, Pete Lavasser, phys ed health teacher, Samantha Lynn, art teacher, Joseph Messick, eighth-grade teacher, Derek Moore, seventh-grade teacher with ESER funds, Greg Willett, fifth-grade teacher with ESER funds, Mercedes Phelan, English teacher, Penelope Riccatelli, resource room teacher, Taylor Tar, eighth-grade teacher with ESER funds, Denise Wilson, fifth-grade teacher, Elizabeth Case, kindergarten teacher with ESER funds. Oh, I'll stop there, those were all Sanford Middle School. Moving over to Sanford Pride Elementary, Elizabeth Case, kindergarten teacher with ESER funds, Jillian Gare, art teacher, Shaylen Gagnon, school counselor, ESER funds, Eileen Claude, resource room teacher, Lauren Grass, first-grade teacher with ESER funds, Michelle Greve, first-grade teacher, Erin Guillifoy, second-grade teacher, Brooke LaPage, resource room teacher, Sanford Pride, Gabrielle Sawyer, elementary social worker with ESER funds, Alexandra Smye, K through, K through four, health teacher, Sharon Jackson, and those are all at Pride, and then we have two at Sanford Regional Technical Center going to a second-year probationary, Sharon Jackson, emergency medical services teacher, and William Zahn, plumbing teacher. So I'd like to entertain a recommendation to continue and contract the above nominations for second-year probationary contract as presented.
Motion to approve? John Rue, second. Amy, any discussion? All in favor?
Moving on, these are going to be nominated for the going from second-year probationary or third-year probationary in some cases to continuing contract. So that will be Kathleen Guptel, Bridge Tech, Roisin McGuckin, fourth-grade teacher, Sarah Meal, third, third-grade teacher, Kathleen Turgeon, resource room teacher at C J L, Ashley Walker, self-contained teacher at C J L, Karen Belanger, third-grade teacher at C J L, and Jamie Humber, resource room teacher at C J L. Moving over to MCS, Renee St. Laurent, teacher, Title I, Janet Butler, speech. Moving over to Sanford High School, Darcy Drew, social studies teacher, Brody Ford, social studies teacher, Val Lemlin, social, social worker. Also at Sanford High School, Annie Monroe, art teacher, Erin Murphy Putnam, social studies teacher, Lindsay Strout, science teacher, Lauren Swift, social studies teacher, Genevieve Trafalat, science teacher. Moving over to Sanford Middle School, fifth-grade teacher, Josh Allen, seventh-grade teacher, Tyler Coleman, self-contained teacher, Marty Kane, special education, moving, yeah, Cindy Finney, special education teacher, Justin Petrock, a music teacher, Erica Scarono, band teacher, Mark Cheverry, sixth-grade teacher, Danielle Stefanino, eighth-grade math teacher, Lauren Cyfers, English teacher, and Shannon Tracy, social worker. Moving over to Sanford Pride Elementary, Celeste Bemis, Title I, Hunter Brandon, third-grade teacher, fourth-grade teacher, Danielle Fernandez Phelps, school council, Lori Keen, self-contained teacher, Kathleen Mayer, music teacher, Megan Menino, third-grade teacher, Stephanie Simpson, kindergarten teacher, Gwen Towne, and that is Sanford Pride. And then over at S R T C, Jason Brown, automotive collision repair, Pam Durak, landscaping and horticulture, Fred Glock, information technology and networking, Jen Bartlet, career planning coordinator, and Jason Richard, career exploratory teacher. So I will take a recommendation to continue and contract the above nominations with a continuing contract as presented.
Sure, I'll make a motion to accept.
Any discussion? All in favor? All in favor. Okay, moving on to policies and procedures. Second reading of the workplace bullying.
Good evening, we have policy GBGB, which is workplace bullying. This is a second read of this policy. There are no changes since the first reading that we had a couple of meetings ago. Just a reminder that this is now a required policy to address workplace bullying, which is public law, chapter 471. The policy drafted meets these legal requirements while ensuring that employee discrimination, harassment complaints are addressed under the appropriate policy and law, and so I recommend approval.
Okay, motion approved? Motion approved. So moved, seconded. Any discussion? John?
Yeah, I did read this today and I just, just based on some history, under reports and investigations, at what point is something put in an employee's file, personnel file? If somebody brought up on bullying an employee, this is, this is employees, right? This, right? At what point, if, if I accuse you of something or it's investigated, just, at what point does something go? I know I'm on thin ice here, but that's where I usually go, so.
I'll answer the first part of that question and then I'm going to defer to Mr. Nelson. I think my, my initial response to that is if when we receive a formal complaint, that complaint is investigated and then we develop, we write a report based on the outcome of that complaint. I'm not sure, Mr. Nelson, maybe you can answer or we'll get back to it, but when it goes in the personnel file.
Yeah, when we have that report, typically what has happened is we will, in that, we will let the CC know that a copy of that is going into the file. So if it gets to the investigation report level, that will be going into the file. That will be going in there regardless if it was, regardless of the outcome of what that is. Because I think if we're reaching an investigation level, that's something that we'd want to be able to, be able to make sure that we're documenting and keeping track of.
I found it interesting that parents and others are also included in this, which I found appropriate.
Okay. Anyone else? All in favor? All in favor. Items for future agenda? Thank you, Steve. Nothing? Okay, calendar announcements?
Sure. So a couple here are, as I mentioned earlier, our high school and SRTC advisory committee meeting, that's going to be this Wednesday at 1:30. Our next school committee meeting will be two weeks from tonight, Monday, May 23rd. I do want to announce, we have two meetings in June. One is, first one is on Monday, June 6th. The second one is scheduled for Monday, June 20th, but that's when the Juneteenth holiday is being recognized. And so in talking with the chair, we've looked at moving that up from the 20th to the 13th. So we'll go back-to-back meetings, June 6th, June 13th is what we'd like to do. That should work out well, even though it's a week turn. It will talk about us, where graduation and all of the end of the school activities are there. Looking at that, just because I'm away on June 27th, with that, we thought that may be something. So just put that on your radar as we look at that. Also, a couple other calendar announcements. I've already mentioned that the high school spring concerts tomorrow night, 6:30 PM in the Performing Arts Center. If you missed that, right, Sarah, you're going to be recording that and you can see that on WSSR TV. The next Sanford Performing Arts Center Advisory Committee meeting is this Wednesday, the 11th at 3:30. Our next leadership team with the city is this Thursday at 10:00 AM. CGL's fourth grade concert is this Thursday at 5:00. Big happenings at Carl J. Lamb School, their Color Fun Run is coming back this Saturday, May 14th at 8:30. As mentioned earlier, the high school prom is this Saturday, the 14th. Looking ahead, the JMG closing presentation at the high school will be Tuesday, May 17th, from 3:00 to 4:00. And then some concerts happening on the 17th. MCS, grade three concert at 5:00. Grade four concert following at 6:00. May 19th, grade one concert at MCS at 5:00 and the grade two concert at 6:00. They, a pretty neat ceremony that happens is the CNA program pinning ceremony at SRTC. That's Thursday, May 19th at 5:30. And then, as mentioned earlier, Friday, May 20th is the This Is Us celebration at Sanford High School. Also that morning, there'll be a high school underclassmen awards at 9:30. So as you can tell, we are towards the end of the school year with a lot of different activities happening. We'll do our best to try to keep people updated on those.
Okay, thank you. Does anybody have any last comments, anything they'd like to? No? Okay. Motion to adjourn the meeting at? 7:25. So moved, seconded. Thank you very much, John and John. All in favor? All in favor. Good night, everybody. Thank you very much.